Hello and welcome to another episode of the On Trade Network Sessions. Tonight, my very special guest is industry professional and currently Commercial Director at Guilo UK, Shaun Robertson. Shaun, thanks for joining me.
Good evening and thanks for the invitation. And what a top man you are to have started the On Trade Network, moving towards 3,700 members. Splendid.
Well, thank you, mate. You know what, I get a lot of people messaging me saying thank you and whatnot. And what I realised probably about two o'clock in the morning the other day that I'm going to take the time to do now, is it's not just me. So I might have set it up, but there's two guys helping approve all the posts, edit the videos and all that kind of stuff. So Stuart Faraday and Darren Asher who are working bloody hard behind the scenes.
So I get No, indeed, indeed.
And too much of the credit, so.
Well done, all of you, obviously. And it just shows that, you know, depending on how we're going to chat about it, but what a much needed platform and philosophy you've started it with. So cracking stuff to all of you.
Well, thank you, mate. And thank you for joining here. And thank you for joining me for this because really interested to hear a little bit about the beers. But it'd be great if you could just share, you know, you've been in the industry a long time. If you can just give a bit of background about, you know, where you've come from.
Yep. Yep. So I started as a barman when I was a student in West London. And as you do to pay your way through studies and enjoy yourself at the same time, love the industry from the off there. It was probably a marker for my returning to it after I had a sports science degree at Tambrunelli University. The reason I say that is because there's a degree programme in sympathy. But clearly I got the bug for hospitality whilst studying. I then returned to Fulham and had my first job as a GM of a wine bar for them. And then concept with Jim Thompson started on King Road, Chelsea. And that was a cracking concept bar restaurant. And again, as a fairly young fella, I was privileged enough to work in a dynamic concept bar like that, which was flying at the time, very fast and challenging. And then I just went on work for the multiples, independent bars, restaurants and some of the chains to get myself well rounded, I hope. I did a bit of travelling to Australia, New Zealand, stayed in the industry there, a couple of ops jobs, Gold Coast. And for those that know the geography of Australia is a bit of a beach and hotel stretch of Oz. With, you might have heard of Surfers Paradise, I was working north of Surfers. And that was great. I also lived and worked in Italy and a micro brewery startup called Bruton, which is still flying. And again, was very, you know, very much an education for me with a guy called Alexio Gatti, he set up his own brewery, Quera. Came back from that. And then that's when I moved from operational side and to supply side, as I call it. So did a short spell with a couple of distributors and tried to learn as quickly as I could, how this, I'm going to put it, this other side of the business works. And it took a while, I'll be honest, it was complicated. And you can, we all continue to learn.
Absolutely.
And I think the UK landscape in particular is very complex, which we talk about as a distribution and logistics and regional activity. But so, yeah, in the round, ops, bars, restaurants, music venues, then distribution and now last five years of brand builder. So I started co-founded the platform called Pirate Life Europe, which people that know me know that I took the brand into UK and European channels and then I arrived at the side of the cell to end of late November 2017, which I wasn't too happy about. But wasn't in a position of power. So and then, yeah, brand building, I love doing brand building and because the underscore being it keeps me in connect with operators, publicans, restaurateurs, the multi-channel environment we now work in, it allows me to keep myself out there. And I'm in awe, I'm particularly in awe of the continued innovation in the operation scene, I think throughout lockdown. We've just seen some superb innovation and damn hard work by businesses to make themselves relevant and stable and obviously pivot to a position where they can not only keep trading, but also refine their businesses, frankly, which is great to see.
The incredible, yeah, pure miracles happening out there from people who really want to make things work during challenging times. So it's been, it's been fantastic. Well, you it's great to speak to you about beer as well. So we'll go on to into Guilo in a second, but you know, you and I have met up a number of trade shows over the years. And one thing that's always come across is your passion for the industry and passion for beer. So I'm really glad to have you on tonight. So tell us about Guilo.
So Guilo, so because of my pirate life gig, I got referred by contact. And we essentially met each other on Zoom. And they said, look, you know, we're thinking about coming into the UK. And I'll explain the Guilo model in a minute. And we had two weeks of calls. I explained what my background was, what I felt the opportunity was. They were very, very clear, concise, great, dynamic team. And that was it. We were off and running. So we agreed to, or they agreed to appoint me as Commercial Director July last year. And we started to put in the structure, which I'll talk about. But the Guilo model, Guilo was founded in Hong Kong late 2014 by two founders, Jeff called Ian Jebbitt, who was an IP lawyer, and went out to Hong Kong with his job. And a very short story, but needs to be told on here because it's so short, is that he, he went into his office, he had a dream about creating a brand called Guilo, went into his office, had a bet with his Yorkshire colleague, you know, I'll bet you $100, I'll start this brand. And this course is Yorkshire. But he, you know, said, no bloody worry, mate. And that was it. He was off. And it was a sort of backroom, you know, home garage type operation with Joe, who's the co-founder, who's from a design background. So they were very complimentary. And at that time, there were about three or four breweries in Hong Kong. So they moved fast, have moved fast. There's about 50 plus now. And but yeah, they really rocked it because they kept it simple. They bought their background of being British, British brewing and realised there was a gap in the market in Hong Kong specifically. The model is contract brewing in market outside of Hong Kong. So the only one really that's of a similar open in the UK is Eastie Boys Public. Obviously got loads of time for it and done great things. And part of our mission is to change the perception of contract brewing market, but it's not a negative thing. It's purely there to brew local, drink fresh, in essence. But also it just shows the opportunity for collaboration country to country. And, you know, where you can get a fit with a particular brewery coming through or has got the skill set for matches up with you nicely, it should be. And this is our aspiration over the next five, 10 years. You know, kind of craft collective, one of a better way of putting it. We're working with our best mates in market. But letting them take the lead in their own zone because they know it better than we do. And so we just want to contribute as a contract partner. And for the UK, that's vocation. So we incredibly lucky and fortunate to have them as a strong, very stable, ambitious partner. An interesting thing about vocation is, I think most people would agree, the perception of a supermarket beer at the moment, but there's so much more than that. So in terms of their timeline, they've just doubled capacity, they're putting in new kit all the time, adding to their team and have every intent to move into the on-trade seriously. And they're brewing some down fine beers. So, you know, we want to, you know, obviously our core range is brewed by them. We want to work in parallel with them in many ways. But we need to define our own, not only our own brand, but our own place in market.
Yeah. Well, it's a good point to have. I mean, I'm a big fan of vocation. Their beers are fantastic. I think we've got, I think we'd better try one, haven't we? So might be a good place to start then is your, is your
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, you've got a belter in your hand there, which is my bias, of course, but this is the art of collaboration. And I actually, what I call true collaboration, coming back without getting over the top. I think we've seen a decade probably of people sort of saying, it's a collab beer. And actually, it wasn't really in essence, it was just somebody showing up for the day. Yeah, proper collaborations are just that. And they take time, they take detailed planning, they take, you know, because you want a longevity in the relationship, clearly. So in our hands, we have East meets West pale. And yeah, I'm going to let you
I think I'm going to go into glass, actually.
Well, splendid fellow, I've got my, my Guilo Gassen. Yeah, okay, I've got the T-shirt on trying to, you know, I am a brand builder after all, but
I like the brand, I do. As soon as I poured that into the glass, then it's got this massive hit in the face of really lovely fragrance. And obviously, this is the thing that it's obviously a cloudy beer. And I read lots of stuff about cloudy versus clear and then traditional versus craft. And for me, it's about quality, it's about what it tastes like. And whether you sit in the craft category, whether you sit in the traditional category, it's just about bloody good beer, isn't it?
Yeah, very much so. And yeah, I should say, look, I mean, it's what you've just said there is just so much what I'm around about and always have been. I mean, you know, as a, as a publican for many years. And I mean, truly defining myself as a publican at the time, you know, I just, it was all about local embrace. It was all about non pretension, getting everybody involved, whether it be a party night through to a, when I ran a variety of venues and, you know, they all taught me something. But in essence, what people, and yes, I know it's a little cliche and I'm probably, you know, digging back in the archives by mentioning the Cheers track line, you know, where everybody knows your name, they're glad you came. But it's true. That's what we all like, I think, in essence, you know, that's why we, we want to be known to be a local patronizer, patronizer, patronage of our local. And, you know, I'm gonna, you know, put my bets on a return to form of that kind of outlet and independent operator post lockdown, I hope. Because I think that that's where the scene shifting to, and rightly so, you know, is goes back to taprooms and smaller breweries working down hard to make a, you know, these brilliant spaces for people to socialise in.
Yeah.
And just enjoy good food and drink. And in combination with even forgetting the beer for a minute, you know, you've got all these street food vendors and you know, what I call authentic other beverages, you know, on offer, it's just marvellous. That's, that's what hospitality is about.
Yeah.
Not some over defined, I mean, I don't want to compromise myself in terms of brand identity, but you know, it's a far removed scene, isn't it, from a, can we say a standard rollout, you know, bar concept.
It's about community. And that's become more apparent. I think it's gone back to the way it used to be, like you say, back when pubs were all about community before, before coffee shops became that space. I think people have realised during lockdown, how much, how much of a part of the community this industry really is.
Yeah.
And I know people will make damn sure that they make the most of it. I know I will. You know, and I've spent a lot of time in pubs and bars over the years through my job, but actually a job is, is a perk. It's in my blood anyway. It's, it's, you know, I grew up, you know, I'm a Welshman who grew up in pubs and bars. You know, it's part of the, it's part of our culture here. And it is everywhere across the UK. And I'm really glad to see that community pub culture coming back. So this is really great, by the way.
Yeah, appreciate that. Obviously, you know, again, in yours and my roles, yeah, albeit I spent some time on the brewing floor and tried to continue to educate myself. Frankly, as we know, this is down to the, to the brew masters, straight head brewers and their teams. And everybody's really chuffed with this. This is our first beer, not only together, but also the first beer we put into market. And so just so pleased with the way it turned out. So we have on our team, we have a chap called Charlie Johnson, who runs a project called the Ronan Fermentation Project in California. And the reason I digress to him is because he's just absolutely, the fellow is just mercurial in his recipes and his sort of approach. And he's also come through, you know, the paces and he really gets it from a commercial point of view. He's a real team player. So he's our master brewer and he has global oversight on our library of beers and collaborations. And so we just opened a new venue in Hong Kong, which opened today. And that's a beautiful bit of kit for us to, you know, experiment with and produce some beautiful beers going forward. A nice bit of crones kept there. And Charlie in this occasion, worked with Matt, obviously at vocation by Zoom effectively. And, you know, they've worked so, so well. We also had a limited batch put into market in our relationship with Fierce. It's our first beers that we've put into market. And that's the nature of the project defined right there. It's just like, you know, we want to work with the breweries that would like to work with us. We learn from each other in the true sense of collaboration. We have respect for each other in terms of the quality we put out. So if we don't think a beer is going to be right, then we're not going to, you know, we're not going to put it out at all. Simple as that, you know, it's got to be respectfully done between these teams. And it's tremendous. That's, that's that contract brewery model that I've talked about. And it works very smoothly, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm rabbiting on there, getting back to more basic things. I love community, mate. I mean, I, you know, I used to play, you know, loads of sport as a young fella. You know, the local was the place to to hit up and, you know, post game and everything else. And then of course you have the party weekends and all the rest of it. But I do think we're seeing really changed environments, aren't we? And I think, you know, in brief, talking about that, what are they going to look like? Post lockdown, you know, we're going to see a few more sort of open box park type environments where, you know, you've got a multitude, it's almost like a festival, a trade festival, but for the consumer.
Yeah.
And that'd be fantastic.
I think so. Yeah, absolutely. So talk to me about COVID lockdown for you personally. And, you know, obviously you took on a new role right in the middle of it. So talk me through that. How did that go?
So it was tough, you know, and one of the things that I want to say is that it was, it was almost depending on our mentality, depending on the people and the individuals that we are, the group of friends we have, the family we have to support us, you suddenly are out of your normal arena. And you don't have any of those touchpoints. So it was very strange, very quickly. And also being very social by nature and possibly garrus, whatever other words to describe myself, I found it really difficult from the off. And so I took a look at myself, so six and eight weeks in and said, right, well, people have made offers of having a chat or calling them up or going on webinars. So I'm going to do all of those things and just try and keep myself in tempo, educated about what was happening, how others were finding it. And I was extremely fortunate to be offered the role. You know, we had time to plan and make sure that we were digitally ready, if I put it that way. You know, that we were a web based business from the off. And that's just fortunate and that's just timing. But from a personal point of view, family wise, I would say it was the latter third I found really tough, is the honest truth. Because as we were starting to come out, I think we're all, well, we're still in it, let's face it, and it's partial reactivation. And I've just found the last 12 and 14 weeks really, really tough because I think we all get energised by certain plans, projects. And if you can't get momentum and traction on the project like you normally would, it's quite tough mentally, isn't it?
Yeah. And it's great to be honest about it. It's important to be honest about it, Shaun, because, you know, we could, we could be a bit blasé, you know, that typical male bravado of, you know, it's all fine, take it in my stride, but no, I'm with you. And actually, the lockdown that came in just before Christmas until now, I would say probably most people would agree, it's been bloody hard. Because you felt like you were getting somewhere again, you know, we had some really positive times and traction and conversations with, with people. And then all of a sudden you stop again and you wonder how many more times is this going to happen? But what I think I've certainly seen in the last sort of three to six weeks, a real positive swing in the right direction from, you know, I speak to buyers on a daily basis in my, in my job, speaks, speak to ops managers, directors and publicans alike. And then I get the, I'm really lucky that I get to speak to lovely people like you as well in the evening and have a couple of beers. And there's a real positive upswing. The very nature of the reason why we're talking tonight is because of the On Trade Network, which was an idea born out of months of lockdown, checking in with friends via Zoom, sharing ideas and just floating the idea with a Facebook page of, let's, let's build a community, an online community. And here we are, like you say, 3,700 odd members in five or six weeks demonstrates the positivity. And if you look at our page, and you know, this isn't me trying to sell the On Trade Network, but I am passionate about where we are. You look at a lot of the industry type pages that are out there, there can be quite a lot of negativity. And it's a lot about, oh, the government's done this now and look what's happened here. And but if you, if you scroll from top to bottom on the On Trade Network page, you won't find, I'm fairly confident, you won't find a single negative post. And that's not because we're blocking them all. Because we try to give a really decent view of what's happening. There's very few posts have been blocked for breaking our selling rules. So don't do that, anyone that's watching. But it's just
I haven't, I haven't.
It's not you. I mean, I'm speaking to the wider you've been very good. But no, it's been, it's been all been positive. So I'm really glad to see it. And it makes me grateful to be in this industry and not, not anywhere else. So
I think you've got a beautiful balance going. And I'm not trying to be cheesy about it, you just have. And that comes from the fact that you're of your own respective backgrounds, you guys that set it up. But also you've got that balance of making it function in the way that, you know, at its most supportive and also some of your partners, you know, so far, obviously the Drinks Trust and you know, recruitment specialists like 2am and the list goes on and everybody contributing. And that's what it's all about. That's a beautiful thing, you know, putting resource out there for people to utilise and at the same time, allowing them to contribute back. You know, should they have the opportunity and or of course, the easy networking opportunity is for somebody who's looking for a raspberry tequila specifically for an event or, you know, I mean, it's just such a wonderful, open platform. And yeah, beautiful thing. That's what social media, for my humble opinion, is meant to be about.
Yeah. Well, it's used for the right reasons. It can be a really great tool. And there was a little bit of scepticism from a few people, you know, good friends of mine when I was setting it up that, hang on, you want to put sales professionals in the same group as buyers and publicans, you know, they should be in separate places. No, it's a community. That, that day has gone, that ship has sailed. We're in a new world post-COVID, where if we want to survive as an industry on the whole, we're all in it together. So, so yeah. And it's working so far. So far, it's working.
Yeah. And people have got initiatives and, you know, even outside, like you say, of their wares to sell, so to speak, then, you know, they're undertaking projects and they're just looking for advice. And, you know, it could be as simple as, you know, I've seen loads of stuff on there already. People looking for, oh, we're setting up a, you know, does anybody know a couple of decent chippies in in the Tunbridge Wells area because we're doing this or that. Yeah. I mean, it's just terrific, isn't it? Pro grassroots stuff.
Yeah. And it really puts a spotlight as well on, on what the hospitality industry really is. It's not just pubs and people getting drunk. It's cleaning companies, it's builders, you know, it's electricians, it's all these suppliers that all within the fabric of the industry that rely on pubs being open. So when you see posts on social media of people saying, oh, why do people care about pubs being open? Because you do see it a little bit, you know, I'd rather the schools this and that. And it's not about what, whether we open schools or open pubs. It's about the, you know, these, all these, these different factors, they're all linked to this industry, you know, so there's, it's not just pot washers and barmen that are sat at home twiddling their thumbs while the pubs are shut. It's builders and electricians and it's all these people and DJs. And, you know, I'm a musician part time, Shaun. And I go out and play pubs while I used to, I haven't for a very long time because of this. And, you know, there's musicians who made a living out of, out of playing pubs, who've had no, no income, DJs. It's so wide. So
I couldn't, I couldn't honestly, I could not feel more intensely about what you're saying. I, I did a project which taught me more about myself and others. I think that's probably about 13 years ago, but it was called the Spitz, Spitfield Arts and Music Project. And by definition, it was a, it was a charitable, you know, board of trustees that were effectively, it was on the back of the old Spitfield's market. But everything you've just said reminds me of the whole embrace of the different characters and what we can learn from each other. I'm not a muso, but boy, I try my best to understand what it's like to run a music venue and, and look after musicians and look after, you know, an independent group of people that were just trying to, you know, give, give us joy, not, not just through music, but, you know, we had an art gallery and a other creative spaces within the venue. So and everything you've just said about, I know I'm repeating what you've just said, but I do feel so strongly about it, you know, the, the much forgotten people are on the periphery of these things or will put the festival together or, you know, especially on if the event scene, it's like in the obvious. So yeah, they need to be, you know, talked about. And then they've lost a lot, not just income, but their whole livelihood potentially and identity to a certain extent. You know, that as a performer, you know, that's really difficult, you know, you get driven to, to perform, so to speak. And you know, when that's taken away, it leaves a, probably leaves a big hole in many people's lives.
Yeah. Yeah. Far beyond salary. Yeah. And a real void for people. You know, I know, I know gigging musicians who make a living out of it and pay the mortgage from, from playing those circuits who yeah, it's great to get paid for it, but they do it for nothing. You know, if they had a day job as well, they'd still go out and play music like me, you know, I don't, I don't do it for, for money, but I still went out before COVID and I'd play at least once a month in a, in a venue. And because it's, it's, it's my, it's my therapy, I guess.
Definitely, I definitely get it. And also you mentioned the mandolin there, but and I digress in whether it's appropriate for our chat. But I hope so. But there's a beautiful publican of my acquaintance, which again, he runs two community venues, but there's a great band called The Dirty Spoons and they're all writers, sort of mandolin outfit. I'll have to introduce you to
Well, we were, you know, anyone who's wondering what that reference is, I've got a mandolin sat in the corner. We were talking about our environments and where we, where we do our work. And I'm lucky to be surrounded by music stuff and various other things. But let's talk about another one of your beers.
Yeah. So indeed, the tropical lager you flashed up. And interesting from a branding point of view, isn't it? You know, again, I'm not using the platform to sell. So tropical Pilsner is what it's called in Hong Kong. We debated, you know, whether it should be called tropical lager here. What we tried to do with our range of beers, and I'm not going to go into all of the profiles today because I mean, it's just not what this chat is about. But Chat is about, but clearly we're trying to bring cultural nuances and flavours of not only Hong Kong, but you know, South East Asia. Um and our hope is, is to explore the Pan Asian um scene in our own way. Uh with people of the UK, but also uh Europe and Scandinavia, you know, there's, there's lots of uh. You know, opportunity there. Um and we hope to do that through our social media is, you know. That's, that's the way to organically grow and educate people and just not, you know, not. Not come in a crass manner and say, yeah, buy this, it's the best session IPA you've ever tasted. But just to say, look, we think and we hope. We're bringing a, a range of difference in our flavours and and feel of of the region. Um and. If you wanna find out more, you know, we've got the platforms to chat to you about it and and support you. And 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 that's, that's quite low-key, but. You know, it's working quite nicely. Um and um, what do you think? Have you? This is Ukino, Ukino, and it's got a sort of a pile. I said I wasn't gonna talk about ace profiles, but um iron line. And um yeah, tropical fruits, essentially, isn't it?
It's very tropical. There's a lot, lot of nice flavour in there. But it's, it's easy to drink as well. It's not challenging.
Well, it's what we said at the start, wasn't it? You know, let's not get overly pretentious about any aspects of beer. Um and all life, you know, it's just like, um, it's just a tweak, but it is on our core range and as part of our core range, it's gotta be sessionable. Uh and 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 therefore the hope is that you would have three or four of them at least. And um you know, I'm a big draft person, so you know, we can't wait to get kegs back out there as well.
And that was gonna be actually a question for me. What, what of these beers are you hoping to see on, on draft?
So we will always do all of our core range and empty batches on draft. Um. We, uh like most breweries, the timing of that, so we'll probably have kegs back in market late May. Um and yeah, obviously that's to do with the complications of, A, have you got the accounts ready for it? And and B, you know, obviously uh brewing time and the timeline. So um. But yeah, we're gonna have, we will, we will always do cake. Um and and hugely important to us and uh in every single channel. You know, and I and I think the mobile nature of some of these environments we've talked about, whether they be. Um you know, festivals or street food vendors or whatever. I mean, it's marvellous now what you can do with lenders and. Mobile bars in general, isn't it? So, you know, there's no reason why, yes, of course, we wanna get stuck into the on-trade. Um but, you know. Nothing like a pint.
No, I think, I I think the perfect way to end the interview, to be honest, is not like a pint. So. Listen, Sean, it it it's a pleasure as always to talk to you and I I really hope people get the passion that you've got for the industry and. And and I really like the beer and and I'm sure we'll have a few of them in person very soon.
Yeah.
So thanks again and cheers.
Cheers and here's to everybody in the industry. Um let's, let's go for it. Let's properly support each other. Um. It's all about, all about friendships and support.
Excellent. Thank you.